Just hang on a little bit longer, see if councillor Comey joins us. All right. 501 council, so we will get to business. I will call the meeting to order. It's our first meeting of 2021, a new year, and we have lots to do, so we'll be busy. I'll read the land acknowledgement. Today, we acknowledge that Collingwood is located on the traditional territory of the indigenous peoples of Turtle Island, including the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Yonishone, and Ojibwe peoples, and our lands connected with the Lake Simcoe Nottawa Siree Treaty of 1818. This is the home of a diverse range of indigenous peoples whom we recognize as contemporary stewards of the land and vital contributors to our society. With that, I will move to the adoption of the agenda, and it's moved by Deputy Mayor Hall and seconded by councillor McLeod. Be it resolved that the content of the council agenda for January 18, 2021 be adopted as amended. And the year is one item addition of staff report, CAO 2021-1 Business Accelerator Opportunity Assessment, January 16, 2021. Councillor, any questions or comments before I call the vote? Seeing none, all in favour? And that is carried unanimously. Next on the agenda is the declaration of community interest. Are there any declarations tonight, council? Seeing none, if you find yourself in that position as we progress, please let us know in the general nature thereof. Adoption of the minutes of our meeting on December 21, 2020 is moved by councillor McLeod and seconded by councillor Madigan. Be it resolved that the minutes of the council meeting held December 21, 2020 be approved as presented. Councillor, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I will call the vote then. All in favour? That is carried unanimously. Councillor, is there any business arising from the minutes from the December meeting? Seeing none, then we will move on to community announcements, and I'll start with you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening.
Councillor McLeod?
Thank you. I am saddened to report that the Collingwood Curling Club's season has come to an end, thanks to COVID-19 ending much earlier than anticipated. But on the advice of the Simcoe Muskogajistik Health Unit, the ice is being taken out as of this week. Well, they didn't say that the ice had to come out, just that it's unlikely that we'll be able to complete the season. So as the club is grateful to this council for extending the largesse that it has with regard to the loan payment, and it will try again in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Madigan?
Just, I wanted to give a quick shout out again to all our frontline workers, including all the retailers downtown, really having a hard go at it. But most importantly, the barbers and hairstylists, I don't know, for some reason, my son got me a clipper for Christmas, and I thought I could cut my hair. So I'm faking it until I make it here, and I appreciate councillor McLeod's earlier comment that she doesn't like what she's done with her hair. I think it's fabulous. But if not, Marion, I can come by and help you out. Look at what I've done to mine. So come on by. We'll stay six feet apart. I'll just cut it on a pole. So again, just to shout out frontline workers and the barbers, I missed you guys tremendously. And that's why God gave us hats. So I moved that we are allowed to wear hats at council.
We'll take that under advisement, and I would like to see a video of that haircut and process. Councillor Doherty?
Thank you very much, your worship, and I have just one. And this is a message to our local business community. If, and I'm sure there are many businesses are suffering because of being closed or significantly reduced sales volumes, a reminder that the federal government is offering loans of up to $60,000 as part of their COVID relief package. Even if you applied earlier in the spring of this year and were unsuccessful in receiving one of these loans, the criteria for approval has been reduced, and our MP Dowdell has encouraged any business to reapply. And if there is anyone who is looking for more information, the best avenue is to contact MP Dowdell's office directly. And that's it, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Doherty, and there's also the provincial program. Anywhere, I think, between $2,000 and $20,000, so people can look into that as well. And if they do have questions, I know in the first wave, our Business Development Centre was working very hard with our residents and businesses to match them with appropriate programs and get them information, and I'm sure that will be happening in this shutdown as well. Councillor Jeffrey?
Nothing this evening, Mayor Sanderson.
Councillor Berman?
You missed me. My mind is reeling with hair clipper jokes, but none of them relate to the community, so nothing for me tonight.
And councillor Hamlin?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a little more information about the Ontario program that you just mentioned. It was announced last week, and it is a program of money that is by way of grant. In other words, you don't have to pay it back, and it's for a minimum of $10,000 to a maximum of $20,000. Applications can be made now. And the businesses that qualify have to have shown a 20% reduction in revenue between April 19 and April 20, as I say, of 20%, but there are also different criteria. If you're a new business that's established since April 2019, so you might still qualify. And just lastly on that, and I'm reading from the press release here, shutdown will be able, the problems, sorry, the shutdown will be able to apply for one-time grant and use this funding in whatever way makes the most sense for their individual business needs. For example, some businesses could need support paying employee wages, while others need support with their rent. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are into our first week of the shutdown, and so we're asking our residents to stay at home and leave home only for essential travel or work if necessary. And we will be providing supports through the town, through the Business Development Centre. So if you need information, if you're a business looking to find out what permits you can qualify for, please contact the Business Development Centre. And I know that CAO Skinner will be giving an update in terms of impacts for us at Town Hall and for our residents and issues about enforcement. So we will get that under other business. And with that being said, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And it is moved by councillor Doherty and seconded by councillor Madigan. Be it resolved that the general consent agenda, having been given due consideration by council, be received. There are six items. 6.1, Paul Ireland Letter Recall for Public Meeting on the Judicial Inquiry. 6.2, Proclamation Re Crime Stoppers Month, January 2021. 6.3, Minister of Energy Northern Development Mines Removal of Requirement to Release a New Long-Term Energy Plan Every Three Years. 6.4, COVID-19 Distribution Task Force Update, December 31 of 2020. 6.5, Georgian Triangle Development Institute Letter to Premier Ford Re New Collingwood Region Hospital. And 6.6, Tim Friar Letter Recalling Judicial Inquiry and Its Steps. And I will call the vote to receive and then ask if there are items that you wish to pull. So first dealing with the receiving, all in favour? And it is carried unanimously. Thank you. Are there any items that you would like to pull? Deputy Mayor Hall?
Thank you. I'd like to speak or comment on 6.5.
Okay. Councillor Doherty?
6.1.
Okay. And councillor Berman?
6.1 and 6.6, thank you.
Okay. We'll start with the deputy mayor, 6.5.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. The reason I've asked to speak to this is just to provide some context. Neither in the title within the agenda nor within the body of the letter does it actually reference back to why this letter is being written. Councillor Hamlin was good enough to bring this matter to our attention at the council table back at the end of September, early October. Our local member for the provincial parliament, Jim Wilson, in a call to the community requested that associations, that members at large, join in a letter campaign in support of the Collingwood Hospital. This specific letter refers to a region and hospital in the plural, and that would be because it's in support of the two within Jim Wilson's riding, and that being the Collingwood General Marine Hospital and the one in Alastair Stevens Memorial Hospital. So I applaud the GTDI for heeding the call and drafting this letter, and would encourage others to follow suit if not already. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor? Councillor Doherty, 6.1.
Thank you, your worship, and really, this is just to offer some clarification because there seems to be continuing misinformation in the community as to whether there will be a public meeting held in regard to the judicial inquiry and whether the public will have an opportunity to speak. And I am going to go out on a limb and say that I am quite sure that based on the level of interest that the public will be made well aware of the time when the CAO's report comes forward and a meeting is held that would entertain comments from the public, but also that every person who wishes to speak any and all would have five minutes to speak on anything that concerns them or any thoughts that they have in regard to the JI. So again, just to dispel that information. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think I'll look to CAO just to confirm all of that, and then maybe the clerk just to go over the basic rules of engagement or for the public through any standing committee meetings. And so first, I'll look to CAO, Sonia.
Thank you, your worship, to you and through you to councillor Doherty. And yes, absolutely, we are not only working, I'm working quite closely with clerk Almas, who has taken some leadership on this file to produce a report back to council which covers the recommendations and the implications from the report itself, which we're targeting for the next month's February's SIC meeting. I hope we'll have the final report completed, but in any case, there will be an update on the status and the portions that are complete. And I will turn it over to clerk Almas. As councillor Doherty had mentioned, there are some opportunities on an ongoing basis at meetings to hear from the public as well as potentially a series of public meetings that might follow the report. Clerk Almas?
Certainly. Thanks, CAO Skinner, and through your worship to councillor Doherty, that is correct. So similar to all of our standing committees, the process is that the public isn't able to speak without any form of registration. And that conversation at that level is generally limited to not more than five minutes. However, once the forum and the conversation and how that setup has been defined and approved by council, there will definitely be ample opportunity for the public to participate either within a virtual forum similar to this or whether it's through our engaged Collingwood site, and they want to submit something in writing for council's consideration.
Thank you, Sarah. And also, if someone wants to depute, then they would get 10 minutes. Is that right? So they'd need to contact clerk's office and fill out the necessary form to depute in advance of the meeting. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Councillor McLeod, I saw your request to speak card come up. Did you want to speak to this item?
The question that I had regarding timing of the report's delivery has been answered. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you. All right, councillor Berman?
There we go. Thank you for that about me again. Yeah, I'd ask for 6.1, similar to whatever else. Sorry.
6.1 and 6.6, I had you down.
Okay, thanks. So just one specific thing, and it feeds on what everybody else is saying through you to the clerk, and I think this is a rhetorical question. There's a line in Mr. Ireland's letter that says that the public comment is, quote, "buried in an unadvertised committee meeting." And I just wanted to ask the clerk if she felt that was a factually correct statement.
Any comments?
Certainly, through your worship to councillor Berman, that was a concerning comment that I read in that letter as well, and want to assure the public that the public comments are an advertised component of any sort of standing committee. Again, it doesn't have to be registered. All the agendas and information is provided publicly, and I encourage people to subscribe as well to, through icompass, for the different committees that they are interested in. And if, based on that comment too, we will ensure that the public is further advised in any sort of social media or newspaper item to ensure that there's, you know, public is aware how they can work with our standing committees and council moving forward.
Thanks, Sarah. Any follow-up, councillor Berman?
Not on this one. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so this brings us then to reports, minutes of other committees and boards. Are we ready? Go on, 6.6. Okay, go ahead, councillor Berman.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. Along the same lines, but I'll look to you where to direct this question. On councillor, or sorry councillor, on Mr. Friar's letter, again, along the same lines, there's a line in there, and I don't have an update, so I guess it would be through you to the CAO probably, that says unfortunately, at an inexplicable cost of $10 million, have we spent $10 million on the judicial inquiry so far? I don't know that answer to that.
CAO Skinner?
Thank you, your worship. I will going to defer that one to clerk Almas, and I think she has a response ready.
Okay.
Sarah?
Certainly, through your worship to councillor Berman, the costs have not been fully compiled. I think that there was a few items that were coming in. It did not, I understand at this point, it has not exceeded over 8.5. However, those financial figures will be included in the JI report when it does come forward so the public and everybody can be corrected on the proper amounts.
Thank you. Sonia, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you clerk Almas. I did want to point out, and in general, that when items come forward, as people on council would know, but the public who are watching may not. Often, there are many items that are the opinions and recommendations of the writer. And so you will find a number of questions, such as this $10 million that the writer has, Mr. Friar has provided in his, in his letter, that are the opinion, and in this case, we've been able to clarify that is not the amount that's been spent to date. But I just want to note that those are the opinions of the writer and that everyone, everyone understands that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. Any follow-up, councillor Berman?
Yeah, just a little. I haven't read, and I didn't, I only singled out this letter from councillor Friar and the other one because they were on tonight's consent agenda. I haven't read the 18 pages that Mr. Friar's had on the consent agenda since the judicial inquiry. But follow up something that the CAO just said. And I want to discuss it under other business. Opinions I have no problem with, as a guy that blogged and wrote newspaper articles, I love them, and I love them when people put their names to them. But one plus one equals two, that isn't an opinion, so I just want to leave that, and I'm going to bring something up under other business related to the two questions I've asked.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments on these items, council? Seeing none, then we will move to minutes from boards and committees, and we have the minutes from the Police Services Board meeting of December 7. It is moved by councillor Jeffrey and seconded by councillor Madigan. Be it resolved that the minutes of the following board be hereby received and recommendations contained there in be approved. 7.1, Police Services Board Minutes, December 7, 2020. I'll call the vote, and then I'll ask if there's any aspects to be pulled from the minutes. All in favour? And this carried unanimously. Is there any aspect of the minutes of the Police Services Board that anyone would like to pull? And councillor Doherty, and then councillor Hamlin?
Thank you, your worship, just to make comment and express appreciation in regard to the the degree to which the police service, our police services have responded to citizen concerns about snowmobile operation on our trails. And I can see that there's been a very robust response in terms of not only police vehicle, but also pedestrian and police snowmobile surveillance of the trails to ensure that there are, everyone is following the rules. And further, I see that they were successful in receiving a grant of an additional $1,500 to apply to a ride program targeted to snowmobiles and ATV. So kudos to, I mean, our police services do a great job on all they do, but they were very responsive on this matter. And I know that there's a large number of folks in the community who are appreciative, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that, councillor Doherty. I'm sure Chair Jeffrey will bring that up at the next meeting of the Police Services Board. Councillor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, some rising out of my review of the minutes and through you. And I don't know who would answer this. I'm just going to say staff, but if councillor Jeffrey wants to answer, I'm happy to hear from her. My first question is exactly on the topic that councillor Doherty was speaking, about the snowmobile patrol. And I was wondering whether the patrol is going to be coming out on a regular basis or whether it still will be triggered by having enough complaints about a particular location before they go out.
I'll pass that through to councillor Jeffrey, but I would note that none of the OFC trails are currently open.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
So, and it is a connecting link, but councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. Firstly, I think it wouldn't do anything regular because the people get used to it. They're very spontaneous, even in regular roadway ride program. So as long as the trails are open and there's enough snow for their sleds, they will be out when they see it's most prudent to be there.
Thank you for that. I have a follow-up. Because I was talking to some residents when we had snow, seems like a long time ago, maybe a month ago, I came to understand that our local OPP detachment only went out to investigate, you know, complaints by residents of unlawful, I'll say unlawful activity or bad actors on the snowmobile trails. If they had sufficient complaints registered, so the detachment was encouraging the residents to call regularly or to go online and enter their concerns. And then they, as I understood it, the intent would be if there were, they would see that complaints were coming, let's say, every day at 5 o'clock, there was someone, you know, doing something on a snowmobile that they shouldn't, then they would send someone out, which is entirely different from what my, you know, what I would, I'm asking, which is, have they made a decision, and does this, do these minutes say they've made a decision that they're going to, and I use the words regularly, I don't mean, you know, the same time every day, but without it being complaint-based, maybe I should put it that way, to check on the trails.
Councillor Jeffrey, you want to take that? Or CAO Skinner?
Yes, the CAO can add to or whatever. But I think for sure that information assists the OPP to identify the times that are maybe more busy or more active that they should be out investigating. The funding suggests that they will, will be out, not just on a complaint basis, because they've taken that money out of the road. Because the funding came in late, they took those funds out of the roadway ride program. And that takes particular setup to go with that, so they will use that for spontaneous response to, I would say, to the calls and things. But I see no reason, they seemed very intent at our meeting when they spoke to us about being on top of it, so I see no problem. I mean, there's only so many resources and can only go so far. They can't be out there all the time, but I know they're committed to making a difference.
CAO, there is some, okay, go ahead, Sonia.
Thank you, your worship, through you as well to councillor Hamlin. One of the most important things that the Police Services Board does under the leadership of Chair Jeffrey is to set priorities for the Police Services Board. And in the minutes that are in actually today's agenda, they did confirm what those priorities would be going forward. So they do talk about safety, road safety, and I can't remember if they talk about trail safety, but I would group them together myself. And so they do decide what to do, whether they will be complaint-based or regular patrols under that general guidance on priorities that are set by the Police Services Board. And that's really how things, how things happen. So I wouldn't doubt that complaints from the community or observations through the non-emergency line are quite helpful in them deciding whether to be a regular patrol or a spot patrol based on complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Those answers. My second question has to do with, there's something called Collingwood Town of the Blue Mountain Action Plan Priorities, and one of them is traffic. And it talks about working collaboratively to identify collisions, affected areas, and focus patrol strategies to address driver behaviors. So my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to our staff, I think for this one. Will our staff be working with the OPP on the troublesome intersections? And I ask this because I know about a year ago or so, we received a council list of where the most problematic intersections in town were for accidents. And I'm just wondering, as these are identified by the OPP, are we as a town working to change those intersections? Sometimes it's, you know, I'll just tell you, I have to be frank. One that is always on my mind when I drive by is on First Street, driving easterly, going through the intersection, the people turning left into McDonald's. I have seen so many near misses there as I come through that intersection. So anyway, for example, that one, if that was in fact one the OPP saw as one that was, you know, causing a lot of accidents, does that information get translated down through to our staff and priorities for, you know, making changes to road networks? So that was just my question, whether we're collaborating in that regard.
CAO Skinner?
Thank you, your worship, and through you to councillor Hamlin. Yeah, I think this is one where we, we look at the roles really of the different parties, and this is a good question. So the OPP are on the road, and their, their role is enforcement using the town's priorities. So they do that enforcement, and through being on the road, they have some insights and actually some data on collisions. However, the town staff under the engineering department also look at those collisions in different ways. So they might compare the traffic volume against the numbers of collisions and the types of collisions in a more technical review. For example, and thanks to council, we have a new engineering technician that will be doing that type of analysis. So sometimes it's not only at face value on the enforcement and experiences on the field, but both the enforcement experiences in the field and that engineering analysis that together bring forward priorities that should come to council for investment. So that's a long way to say yes, we are continuing to speak with the OPP from a staff perspective to make sure that we do identify the highest priorities for action. And Director Slama has been very involved in that. And Director Slama has been very involved in that. And I would also thank the Police Services Board and the folks who've spoken up there to, to help us to identify those places, both for engineering and, and for the Police Services Board. Thanks.
You follow up, Counsel Hamlin?
That's great. Thank you so much.
Counsel McLeod, I saw your card up. Did you want to speak to this item?
I have a question actually through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Chair Jeffrey. I see that there's a new member of your, of the Police Services Board effective at this meeting. And, and a quick Google search of that person's name left me very, very impressed with, with their resume. Is this now a full complement for this, for this committee? I know that there's been a smaller number of members up until this time.
Chair Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. Yes, we are ecstatic to finally be at full complement at the Police Services Board with the addition of yet another spectacular member from the provincial appointment system. So we're very pleased to be a full house now.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions or comments on the Police Service Board minutes? Counsel? Seeing none, I'm on to item seven point, or sorry, eight point one, the staff report. And it is dealing with the Business Accelerator. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Hall and seconded by Counsel Doherty. Maybe I'll read this in, all in after we've received the report because it's fairly lengthy and there may be questions that arise out of that. So why don't we go to the staff report and then we'll read in the motion at that point.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I believe that there is a short presentation which simply provides some of the titles from the staff report that was posted via the addendum that was mentioned on Saturday. So thank you to the Clerk's Office for making sure that got into your and the public's hands as soon as possible. And I just wanted to point out that, so what we're doing here is looking at the Business Accelerator opportunity with a town's lens on the drawbacks and or opportunities that an accelerator for local businesses might provide. And overall staff agree that the business case is strong and we don't have a you know, other than a few little things I will mention, we don't have concerns with the analysis or conclusions related to accelerating the growth of businesses and accept that the the consultants who provided the report, the entrepreneurial folks that participated as volunteers in the steering committee and the project managers did a good job and job in that overall report. The questions remain are things like, you know, how good is this business case compared to other investments? For example, that the town could put forward and is this the time to go forward with them? And I do want to point out that this is an accelerated report back. There was funding available from the Center for Business and Economic Development, SEBED. And they had indicated that they needed a council reply by today in order to meet their own deadlines. So we've attempted to do the best response possible in the timeframe. And we'll see how well we've done by the, through the council discussion to follow in addressing maybe some of the questions you may have as council members and may have heard from the community over the last week or two. On the next slide, there's a, is what is a business accelerator? And I'm not the expert, but just for new listeners who may not have participated in the consultant report presentation to council on the later in December. It generally is, has been explained to me as something that would take over beyond the services that our, our business development center currently provides. So if we're looking at the business development center as something that really focuses primarily on businesses with no to maybe three-ish employees, the accelerator is looking at, at a different scale of businesses who are scaling up to from three to ten plus employees and are looking for a different level of support. They're looking for external investors and so that's what this would provide. It includes education and training, opportunities to expose people to networking and pathways to funding. And I do want to just be clear here, in this proposal and in a business accelerator, the municipality would not be actually funding businesses. This is not providing businesses with capital. It's providing businesses with education, training, networking, access to others who may wish to invest in, in the company. Typically is a physical location, although that wouldn't be recommend, that is not what's being recommended here in the first year or two. Usually program, the business would participate for three to four months and then graduate onward. And typically there'd be a focus on, on metrics within it. Probably in Collingwood, there would be also, and this would be supportive of a rural economic development grant. Should be in applying for one, and in fact, implying for a multi-year red grant, they're called, that other opportunities to engage the business community beyond the number who are the smaller number who are actively participating would likely exist. Things like chances to ask some of the mentors who are hired questions, forums where broader number of companies could get involved. And if we could go to the next slide, please. There's been a history of, of this. It's come to council a number of times. I won't go into the details, but it first started in June twenty nineteen. So there's been a number of touch points where we agreed to do the study. We talked about the funding of the study and the report back in leading, leading up to the report back that I mentioned in December twenty twenty. And as part of that, you will recall, but listeners may not recall, that council asked staff to go back and do a couple of things. One is this assessment compared to town priorities. And the other one was to do an Engage Collingwood Public Survey. And you'll see within the report that we received fifty responses, which is a, a good number, but nowhere near the twenty-four thousand-ish people who, who live in the community today. But of those fifty responses, as between January seventh and twelfth, seventy percent were positive, twenty-two percent were neutral, and only six percent were negative. So the people who are listening about accelerators are quite positive about accelerators, given that small sample size. Next slide, please. Well, strategic importance. Our community-based strategic plan talks about Collingwood as a hub of successful entrepreneurs and businesses offering rewarding jobs. And quite recently, I believe it was in November, council also approved the Economic Development Action Plan. So one of the questions that always comes across my mind is, we know that Collingwood and South Georgian Bay have a true power place. We know that people want to be here. Covid has only made that more apparent. So the big question for me is, do we need to further invest as a local municipality in attracting businesses and further supporting the businesses that we have? And I think that both the community-based strategic plan and the Economic Development Action Plan, plan have firmly said, yes, we need to act. It's not enough to, to be who we are. We have a business community that is exceptionally strong and also exceptionally supportive of each other and of the town. So I think that that is also a, a point to, to jump from toward actions related to the further success and support of businesses. There's three key considerations noted on this slide and in the report. One is tax-based diversification. We've been very, very positively served by the interest in people to live here. However, we have moved from about sixty percent of our municipal taxes being based on the municipal tax, the residential tax base to about eighty-five percent being residential as opposed to commercial or industrial. So really we've become very dependent on residential taxes. And we do have to think about the vision of our community. And we want active transportation, but our, you know, we want people to be actively transporting themselves to work and back. We need work for that. If we're going to have affordable housing, then we need people to have work so that they can achieve that affordable housing. And if we want to have a community for all ages, we need people, places for people to work or we won't be able to attract and have all those, all those, all those ages. The second, the last two bullets on this slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about Together, which is a future of our Business Development Center and the broader South Georgian Bay. It's a few fundamental principles here, which may or may not appeal to council. But one is, do we want to be a leader in business development within South Georgian Bay? So that's one question. I propose that we do, we have been a leader of entrepreneurship and that it is a role that's an appropriate role and in line with our vision for Collingwood. A second question is, do we want or need any eventual physical space that is created for an accelerator or adopted by an accelerator to be co-located with our Business Development Center? And our Business Development Center currently includes the South SPEC, South Georgian Bay Business Development Center, no, it's anyway, the provincial funding piece. We only have a commitment from the province for another year and a bit for that provincial funding. So should we not be married with an accelerator or our consolidated investments in business supports? We will be finding ourselves with only our prevent, only our municipal staff in that Business Development Center. And I don't think that's going to be a strong focus for our businesses going forward. So I think that it, it would make sense for us to remain co-located. The three thousand plus contacts that the, the Business Development Center has with businesses in our area would only feed and enhance an accelerator and vice versa. And finally, talking about the full South Georgian Bay. Absolutely, an accelerator should one be created should serve all of South Georgian Bay. And the other half of the Engage Collingwood results did support this strongly. Sixty-two percent of the respondents lived or worked in Collingwood, forty-two percent owned a business in Collingwood. So it was the business folks who were paying attention to the, the Engage study. And fourteen percent were from the Town of Blue Mountains, ten percent from Wasaga Beach, and four percent from Clearview. And so they're, they're looking at this idea of a business accelerator. However, what happened with our Business Development Center has been that when Collingwood took leadership, we've ended up being the, the major funder of the Business Development Center. And there's, there's some figures in the report, but we're well over five hundred thousand a year. And other municipalities are in the, for SPEC anyway, you know, five, seven thousand dollars a year. So we're, we're much higher. And I think that we should be very explicit about a, if we fund spots in the, in the, in an accelerator, that those spots should go to Collingwood businesses. However, with an larger intent to collaborate. And I do believe that there are more things we can collaborate on in South Georgian Bay. There's hospitals, there's transit, there's accessible housing. And that discussions on collaboration need to be broader than simply a business accelerator or services to business. But while we're funding those, especially at the beginning in this leadership role, we should make sure that Collingwood businesses get access to those spaces. Next slide, please. With respect to physical space and timing, this is the one quibble I had mentioned with the report. The business case that's provided by the consultant talks about physical space being invested in by year two with people in that space by year three. I do think council may want more information prior to investing the five hundred thousand or a portion of that five hundred thousand in a physical space. And if we were to do that in year two, we would be making that decision, you would be making that decision at the end of this year when we're looking at the twenty twenty-two budget. I'm also going to talk about that, that is an off-ramp item in the next slide. If you decide to go forward today with this, the recommendation includes that four hundred thousand be set aside. It's proposed that that come from the asset sale proceeds and that it be earmarked for Economic Development, Business Development Center and or an accelerator. I did receive some questions before the meeting about whether that could be paid back in a future year or for that matter, the final decision on that could be delayed until council makes in Q one its overall decisions on the, on, on, on the asset sale funds. And so those are open questions. I, I do think you could consider both of those options. The town in this proposal, the recommended option would approve the commitment of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one to a business accelerator that would allow it to move forward now. And with four spots of the six being offered guaranteed for Collingwood businesses. And we would seek fifty thousand in additional funding from Simcoe County under one of their programs. And another fifty thousand from neighboring municipalities who would then for twenty-five thousand each get one, get the two, sorry, the other two spots would be worth twenty-five thousand each for a total of fifty thousand, which could come from one or more municipalities. We'd also be applying potentially with SEBED for the red grant, which is up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And all of these, should they come to fruition, would reduce the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town would need to commit. However, the town would need to backstop these in year one if these funding efforts were not successful from Red, Simcoe County and neighboring municipalities. And we would like that the Center for Business and Economic Development, the federal entity, to be a partner contributor in year one and ongoing in-kind and or financial supports in subsequent years. Next slide, please. So there's, the reporting of risk mitigation is that success metrics would be reported to council annually, including the status of the funding sources secured. This is not a for everything by committing in one, I, I've suggested, we've suggested that it be a two-year period, subject to the twenty twenty-two budget that you, you consider an accelerator. And that should be timed to see if this is a good fit for Collingwood and if the initial cohorts have seen success from the program. One thing about an accelerator is that we're not committed forever. We would be able to walk away. And if we'd invested in, you know, six businesses in the first year and some number of businesses in the second year, those businesses was, would continue to see the results of having the knowledge that they've received. And, and council could consider if they want to invest in more businesses or not. Board of Directors, we think, should include your representative, likely someone from the business community because they will need to have a business knowledge if they're on this board. And there's a number of items of accountability and transparency. And uh, there's a number of items of accountability and transparency that would need to be established. Things like procurement and oversight. Uh, recruitment of uh mentors, et cetera, the reporting requirements, liability of the entity. And the selection of business participants to be open and transparent. Finally, the last uh slide. Uh, talks about uh implementation and um. Option B, which is not the one in the red box, it's the second one down. Is to wait. So one of the questions I received today is, does a decision need to be made tonight? So there is an option, option uh B and below uh to wait and determine if uh we need to uh. If we'll find a collaboration with other municipalities in South Georgian Bay. And or if there will be additional grants. Uh, the one drawback from that is that we'll lose the two hundred thousand dollars that's currently available from Seabed. This is a viable alternative uh in discussions with the department heads, uh, this is. Alternative B uh was uh where uh a good number of the department heads were leaning. However, we have recommended option A. Uh, it does come with some concerns, uh, capacity. We uh, in, we have about twenty-five percent of the new economic development manager's time available. Um, with uh Seabed and other partners will need to carry the load to develop. The board of directors and the transition team for this implementation. At this point, for example, there would be questions like with whom does a municipality negotiate to make sure that your requirements are implemented? Because there is no entity yet, we would be creating the entity. However. In full assessment, it does appear that if you wish to move forward with an accelerator. This is a viable option, option A can be proceeded with, uh, but you would need to backstop it with uh, with funding. Now from the asset sale proceeds. And I think that covers the uh, the major features within the, the staff report and I would turn it back to you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia, I, I think what I should do now is uh read in the full text of the resolution and then we'll open the floor for discussion. So again, it's moved by Deputy Mayor Hall and. Seconded by Councilor Doherty, be it resolved that staff report C A O twenty twenty-one dash one, business accelerator opportunity assessment be received. And the council endorsed the staged approach to developing a regional business accelerator as presented in the South Georgian Bay Accelerator Business Plan. And the council support and retain a leadership position in the creation of an independent, not-for-profit business accelerator entity. In alignment with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five Economic Development Action Plan. With the purpose of retaining and growing Collingwood-based companies by offering coordinated and targeted application of advanced business development techniques to help accelerate their growth and success. And the council set aside four hundred thousand dollars of the asset sale proceeds for economic development. Business Development Center and or the accelerator to be spent only upon council's approval. And the council approved commitment of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one from the four hundred thousand dollars set aside from the sale asset. Asset sale proceeds to a business accelerator to get the entity started. And the council offered two guaranteed business spots to other local municipalities for twenty-five thousand dollars each. And apply to Simcoe County for fifty thousand dollars and backstop up to fifty thousand dollars of additional funding above the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars if these requests fail. And the council acknowledged that the success of the businesses across South Georgian Bay are important. And invite mayors or selected council representatives to a collaborative conversation in early to mid twenty twenty-one about their business development plans and needs. And the council support a business accelerator in principle for two years, subject to the twenty twenty-two budgeting process. To allow time for proven initial results and less than assessment of the value of the municipal investments. And the Collingwood's contributions be contingent upon the following being in place to the satisfaction of the C A O. One, the Center for Business and Economic Development, matching a town's guarantee with a two hundred thousand dollar commitment in twenty twenty-one. And continue to be an equal or greater contributor, contributor to the town in twenty twenty-two. Two, Collingwood having four business spots guaranteed in the year one cohort. And an agreement in principle that municipalities will receive business spots in accordance with their contributions. Three, agreement that should grants such as a multi-year Red Grant be received that bring the total from municipalities above the six hundred thousand dollars. Required in two, in twenty twenty-one, funding committed by municipalities will be credited to that municipality for a future year. Four, agreement that calling, that should Collingwood's fifty thousand dollar backstop funding be used. This funding will be credited to Collingwood for a future year. Five, a commitment to report upon success metrics at year end, including a report on public funders and total private sector contributions. Six, the, the board of directors in, include an appropriately skilled voting appointee by Collingwood's council. And seven, commitment to develop an M L U between the town and the accelerator entity to set out roles, accountabilities. And transparent operating and governance requirements. So with that being right in, I will open the floor to questions or comments, and council, go ahead, deputy mayor, and then I've got Councilor McLeod.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Saunders, and if I could take a moment or two to uh. Uh, voice opinion in support of uh this particular staff report. Um, I'd just like to preface my comments by saying that uh, I believe I was the individual that the C A O was referencing that uh reached out today. To request whether or not this could be referred deferred for uh another day. Um, uh, what I should have said was that it was in the context of being that delinquent student who likes to procrastinate. Uh, how much time did I have to review the appropriate materials that we received over the weekend? Uh, and uh, in doing so, I got my act together, so thank you. This picks up on the uh, report that was uh tabled or the presentation that was tabled on the twenty-first of December. Uh, twenty twenty. And I think that uh, that presentation, uh, the two individuals in particular who were part of that presentation. Uh, really laid out the foundation as to why this is a solid found uh investment. For uh, our municipality and hopefully our neighboring municipalities to support a sustained and continued economic growth. If I step back uh, a few years and uh, go back to the council I first served on between ten and fourteen. Um, in, in my opinion, and, and I, I stand to be corrected. Uh, there are very few things that a lower-tier municipality can do to actually drive um, economic growth. We don't have the ability to bonus, we don't have the ability to provide favorable tax incentives for one class versus another, that type of thing. Uh, and the C A O is quite correct that we have the foundation from uh, a natural standpoint. Uh, as it relates to some of the physical amenities, whether it be the beach to the east, whether it be to the escarpment to the west. Uh, you know, fantastic trail systems for uh hiking and biking, et cetera. Uh, the irony is that all of those beautiful amenities fall outside of the physical boundary of the town of Collingwood. And we for years have been able to leverage those, those amenities. But when I go back to the council between ten and fourteen, I think two things that they did uh, that have proven to be successful. One is that they were the first council to really step up and invest money in municipal transportation. Uh, they invested in municipal transportation within the, their own boundary. And we facilitated a link between uh, Collingwood and the village at Blue, and of course. Uh, in my opinion, that, that should be an asset that continues to grow. And there's been recent conversations about maybe taking that to the next level with our neighbors to the south in Clearview. Um, and, and the other is the formation of the um. Uh, the uh, the, the Seabed, the uh, building uh adjacent to Town Hall where the four uh. Entities were brought under one roof to provide a, a common resource, uh, a common uh launching point for people who are looking to make inquiries within the community. And I think over the time that that has been established, their numbers in terms of who they have served, who they have benefited. It speaks for themselves and this is just really sort of a natural progression in terms of what has already been created from that, uh, that decision made back between ten and fourteen. So those are, those are, I think, sort of the key points that I just uh wanted to make. And in conclusion, I just wanted to say that. We have all things that I think people are looking for in a community. Uh, we are aesthetically beautiful in terms of our downtown, we are naturally rich with our access to the water. We have an incredible wealth of talent in terms of people with expertise. Uh, backgrounds who are moving to our community, who are from the community, who bring a longstanding history, et cetera. But it would be wrong to simply rest on those foundations, we need to continue, continue to drive forward. Because there are other regions and there are other communities who are equally moving forward and investing in their own communities. And who offer uh many of the same things that we like to boast about here. And as migration from Toronto, from the G T A, from the four oh one, east and west continues outward. Uh, we need to continue to invest so that when people are looking to Collingwood, when they're, sorry, when they're looking to their options. Collingwood continues to rise to the top and um, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Councilor McLeod, I have you next.
Thank you. Uh, I have a bunch of questions um about this report, um, not least of which is why it arrived in my email box at eight o'clock on a Saturday night. Um. I'm not sure to whom to direct that question, uh, because it seems to me that we just went through an exercise wherein we decided when agendas would arrive. And uh, and it was quite a lengthy discussion and fulsome and uh, and agendas arrive on the Wednesday prior to a meeting on a Monday. And we received this at eight o'clock on a Saturday night, is there a explanation for that late date?
Thank you, your worship, uh, through you to Councilor McLeod, uh, there's nobody who would have wanted that to arrive uh sooner, uh, more so than, more than staff. Uh, the reason that that one arrived late uh was due to the deadline of having the report available for tonight's meeting. Uh, it was a really quick turnaround uh to do the analysis and um. And the key deadline truly seems to be the um, the Seabed two hundred thousand dollar matching funding. Uh, the original deadline was Friday, but they had agreed to extend it to today. Um, simply because, uh, as I understand it, if they don't spend it on the accelerator, they needed to find other investments prior to uh, February first. Uh, so um, really that was a constraint on this one, trying to put it in your hands for tonight's decision, but I fully understand if you haven't had time to uh. Uh, digest it, um, there just may be reasons to, to defer or refer that uh to another forum. Thank you.
Thank you, um, I have a, a bit of a list actually here of questions. Uh, so my next one is, uh, have we approached as directed uh at the December, the twenty-first? A council meeting, uh, other municipalities who may well be partners in this uh, in this, and if so, have we received replies from them? And if so, what are those replies?
I'll take that through to C L Skinner, but I, my direction, recollection from the, you know, meeting in December. Was that we asked uh to reach out to other municipalities, I don't know that we defined any terms or conditions, but uh, go ahead, Sonia.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to Councilor McLeod, um, yes, uh, we did at the clerk's office, I, I approached the C A Os. And the clerk's office did send the council resolution and the uh consultant's report to a town of the Blue Mountains, uh, the town of Wasaga Beach and the township of Clearview. And uh, we did, I. Received some unofficial questions back from staff in the town of the Blue Mountains, which seemed like they were uh, starting to consider whether they wanted to sponsor. The equivalent of a spot or two in, but no decisions had been made and they have not finalized their budget. And um. I did receive a uh, a note back from uh Wasaga Beach, which indicated that they needed more time to reply. And I, I understand that the several of the mayors may have also unofficially uh reached out um. At the council level and with that, I, I, Mayor Saunders, and I guess that would have been you that they talked with if, if you have heard from them.
Yes, I, I can confirm, I've spoken with both uh Mayor Mezger from Clearview and uh Mayor Silver from Town of Blue Mountains. And had an email exchange uh with Mayor Buffalo G in Wasaga Beach.
And as a follow-up, I, did they seem to indicate to you, Mr. Mayor, that they were interested in taking part? I, I, the reason I ask this, of course, is that when we're talking about backstops and we're talking about funding opportunities being matched by other municipalities. If the likelihood that they're not going to get on board is higher rather than lower, I'd like to have that information before I make a, before I vote.
I would say the uh response from Wasaga Beach uh was uh that there wasn't interest at this point in time. But the other two municipalities indicated that it was something they're prepared to look at. Uh, it's early days for them in both cases, but it's certainly something they're prepared to look at.
Thank you, um, in December, and it isn't, is, it is contained within the minutes of uh, of our meeting that is in the agenda tonight. Uh, we uh gave the go-ahead for uh the C E B D, I believe, or for someone or other. To go ahead uh and apply for this uh R E D grant, and do we know whether that has been done? I'm reading in the report that we can't expect to hear any kind of um. Response regarding this R E D grant until sometime in August, um, has that grant been applied for?
See you.
Thank you, your worship, I know that, that we have our experts on the, I've been speaking so far, but we do have our experts on the line and uh. Uh, I guess it's X Director Ridlow is still on this file, uh, maybe you want to talk to that one? Please.
Good evening, council, um, through you, uh, Mayor Saunders, and the uh, R E D gra- uh, grant, uh, Real Economic Development Grant is due by February first of this year. Um, we are poised to um, get it ready. Um, and of course, that would be in close collaboration with the Center for Business and Economic Development. Uh, because together is truly the benefit that we bring there, we've also been in discussions with the OMAFRA contact for R E D for our region. To understand what will make this the strongest potential application. And furthermore, um, the hope would be that uh, our contact would have a chance to review that prior to submitting as well. So there's a lot of steps that still need to be done. Certainly, one of the requirements that R E D likes to see is a commitment from council um, to the project in some way, shape or form when that application goes in. So um, today is certainly one of those uh steps in the process that would certainly help with the R E D application. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, and as a follow-up to that, actually, while we've got uh, Mr. Ridlow here, uh, thank you for your contributions to our town's success over the last several years. I realize that you are now a former, uh, former employee, um, but perhaps you're the person I, I can ask uh about uh, why it is that the um. That the deadline is for this extra matching two hundred thousand dollars, this is not a unilateral and arbitrary. Uh, deadline, this deadline is connected to this R E D grant or, or is it?
Pardon?
Through Mayor Saunders, uh, the uh, Center for Business and Economic Development, um, two hundred thousand contribution is independent of the R E D grant. Um, so the R E D grant is a provincial fund, um, what Seabed brings is federal funding to the equation. Based on looking at a number of other accelerators, the best-case scenario is when you have multiple layers of municipal, county, provincial and federal government. All contributing their part because it diversifies the risk. But there's also a exponential growing factor, as you get some seed money in, well, then you can increase the money that you can get from the other layers. So um, by having commitment from uh Seabed and potentially the town. That then means that our ask of the Red Grant can actually increase up to the maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it, it's a bit of a moving um. Game, if you will, I, I liken it to Catan, in some ways, where you're looking at seeing how you can, you know, bolster your existing assets to get the most out of them. And be able to achieve what I think all of us want is the best for Collingwood, how you do it, of course, is a question today. Um, and so we've been working hard with our partners. And so we've been working hard with our partners provincially, federally, and county-wise to go, is there support for this? First of all, second of all, how do we need to organize to maximize the support from those other levels of government?
See that you're playing Catan and not pandemic. Just another one, actually, sorry. I'm not quite sure I understood whether, whether I'm clear on your answer. So the CEBED money is not connected to the red money, but the CEBED money is going away as of February 1st if we don't jump on? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. The CEBED, because it's a federally funded organization, has a fiscal year end that ends March 31st. And as a result, if they don't have commitment from the town, they're going to be in a position to seek other projects, but they need time to be able to find those other projects that they want to fund. And that's why they've given the deadline of originally January 15th. So they have enough time to identify other investment opportunities if the town isn't interested. So that's really the key opportunity here is, you know, that's without any application, there's, so to speak, no work required in that. Of course, today is a lot of work. With the red grant, there, we've, we've applied for them. We've been successful sometimes. We haven't been successful sometimes. And that's really the context of the discussion, at least when we look at the different opportunities before us today.
Thank you very much. And that concludes my questions. I do have a motion that I'm pondering, or an amendment that I'm pondering, but I think that I would like to ponder it a few more minutes while other questions get asked. If, because I know that there, there we are.
I'm sure there'll be more questions and hold that thought, and it'll be good to hear other positions as well. So I've got Counselor Jeffrey, Counselor Hamlin, and then Counselor Dory.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I don't think anybody needs to convince me on the value of the business accelerator in the community, but I think there's a couple of chicken egg things or some things that have happened in terms of the funding model and questions that I'm going to have that are causing me some, some concern. So the first is the setting aside of the $400,000 from the asset sale proceeds. I know that we've continually had input at the table that we want to have the discussion from the public input on the allocation of those funds. So for me, it's problematic. If we could refer that request to when we receive the staff report on how we're going to deliberate on, you know, on investing or what we're doing with those asset sale proceeds, I would feel a lot better. So what that means is, is that the funding has to be contained by some kind of reallocation by council approval within the 2021 budget. And I think there's opportunities there with this emergency that's been called again with the pandemic, that there's probably new staff that aren't starting as soon as what we anticipated. So perhaps there's some dollars there. I know the supplemental is always very conservative in the revenue forecast, and there may be some opportunity there. And then my other, one of my questions, aside from that, is that we're offering to local municipalities for $25,000 each, but we're starting out at $37,500 minimum. And is there not an equal value to what Collingwood would be, would be receiving to what the other municipalities would be receiving? So I'm just wondering if I'm reading that wrong, if there's actually a discount to the others we're inviting. And I agree with the C A O's comment that that the attainable housing part has to match. These, it can't be one or the other. They have to be both in place because there's no point in creating the jobs if people can't afford to live here to fill them. So we have our challenges going forward with that. And then another question, do we have four businesses? Do we know that if we create that spot for four, that we have four businesses that want to participate in this? And from what I've heard tonight, I'm really not sure a deferral for a week is plausible in terms of we would just be looking forward to adding another $200,000 to it if we deem it to be a valuable thing to do. So I guess that's kind of where I'm coming at right now. My, my amendments going forward, after I've heard everyone else, might be to consider referring the $400,000 request to the future discussion of the asset sale proceeds and knowing that if we vote on this, somehow it has to get worked out of our 2021 money already voted on. And just maybe an answer for why it seems that the local municipalities are getting a discounted invitation. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Jeffrey. There was a number of questions there, so I'll turn it over to C A, C A O Skinner, and she can work through the list.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Counselor Jeffrey. With respect to the $400,000 from the asset sale proceeds, I think that you could certainly defer a portion of that to the overall asset sale proceeds decision. However, the initial 150, if you wish to go forward today, I think that that initial 150 would need to have a, to come from somewhere. So the remainder beyond that, up to 400, could be deferred to another day with the overall asset sale proceeds. And then further for the 150, should you decide to go forward today? First off, I, I hope it won't be 150. It may be. If we did receive the red grant, it would, it would reduce it by at least 50 and then potentially more if we, we had the other, the Simcoe and other, and other municipality or two contribute. There are some things that could possibly make it available in year, and you mentioned a couple there with the supplemental, potentially staff not starting as soon as we expected, although I hope they will. But the COVID changes and the extension of COVID and the fact that we did receive some COVID funding from the province may help us there. However, it is very early in the year. So alternately, things could go the other way, where we end up with more costs for transit or something unexpected. So certainly, I think we could take it away to, and look at in-year opportunities, but I wouldn't be able to commit to you tonight. We have our new, and our, and our old treasurer on the line, but I, I don't think we could commit to you tonight that for sure that 150 could come from in-year. We could seek it in-year. One of the other ideas that had been mentioned was similar to this year. If we took the 150 and it ultimately had to come from asset sale proceeds, could that be, you know, repaid in the 2022 budget? And I mean, that could be under the direction of councils. Should you think this important enough to proceed with, you could also ask that staff consider that opportunity and provide options for that in the 2022 budget directions. The discount to others, yes, it, it is a discount to others. If you win 100% at a fair, fair six paces, divide the $200,000 out to six businesses, it would cost $33,300 for each business to, to participate. And what we really were looking at was that we wanted this to be a Collingwood-centric type of opportunity, where the staff were relocated with, co-located with our staff and that there was some value to Collingwood and having those types of opportunities within our municipality just for this year, year one. We might want to revisit that in, in years going forward, but there was an intention to build some excitement and to make it attractive for other municipalities to get in on the ground floor with us. And that was, it also worked out from a math perspective with the, the amount that was available from the maximum of the red grant. And I was going to turn it over potentially to Martin Ridlow or Director Farr to talk to your, I believe, your last question about having four businesses from Collingwood that would be ready and eligible to participate, please.
Go ahead, Martin.
Through Mayor Sanderson, the advisory group, informal one, that worked with a consultant in developing the report, spent a fair amount of time analyzing the number of companies that are in Collingwood with that size of, call it three employees, three to five employees, that number over 700, if my memory serves me well. They further analyzed that to understand if there are businesses that would fall under the criteria that were defined on one of the first slides that C A O Skinner talked to, looking for high growth, have intellectual property, are prepared to expand in Collingwood. And the team felt that there was at least a handful, if not more, companies that would fall under the criteria that we were looking for. Obviously, a company has to apply and has to be reviewed for those eligible criteria. But there was a strong sense of confidence that, yes, that year-one target of four companies could be met in 2021.
Thank you, Martin. Any follow-up, Counselor Jeffrey? You're muted.
I pressed it, but it didn't go. Sorry. So I was encouraged by the C A O's response regarding the setting aside of the asset sale proceeds. So if I ask, my ask at that point, then would, that would be repaid from any 2021 surplus or in the 2022 budget failing that?
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And when we get to tabling it, I'll look to, maybe you can put an amendment, put some wording into that. And I know that staff has put that in in previous reports, and I don't know, C A O Skinner, if that wording is out there that we could add in when, when the time comes. Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you. I am very much in support of the, support of the accelerator program for our community. I wanted to thank staff, notwithstanding the late receipt of it, of this report. It is very in-depth and, to my mind, covers all of the issues that, as a community, we would want to think about. There are a few items, really, I think they would all fall into the conditions that have been suggested we put in place that I particularly wanted to address. The first one is, well, the first condition, actually, that for the second year being 2022, that the Center for Business and Economic Development, CEBED, I believe Martin called it, would have to come up with the same contribution as the town. And I want my questions for you, Mr. Whitmer, is whether our C A O is aware of this entity's budgeting for that year and whether they would have funds that could be made available for this purpose.
I'll look first to Sanya.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Counselor Hamlin. I know that Martin Ridlow's had a number of conversations in the last day or two with the, the CEBEDs. I believe her title would be Executive Director or Managing Director. And they're, like us in many ways, in that they're unable to commit funds for 2022 prior to that fiscal year. And, and it would be subject to budgeting, and it may also be subject to grants that become available for, for them to spend. So I think that the most important thing here isn't that we know for sure that that funding would be available, although I have, you know, more than 50% confidence that, that they will be. But also that the town is not committed to go forward in this endeavor without its partners. So the preamble that, that is in the, the proposed motion says, to the satisfaction of the C A O, that they would commit equivalent to at least what we've committed, you know, hopefully in financial funding and/or in kind as part of our condition of continuing to go forward in partnership. So definitely can't commit, commit them other than, I think they are, from a staff perspective, and I believe from a board perspective, very supportive of an accelerator opportunity in this area.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to, because I had the same understanding that CEBED, you know, wouldn't know about its funding for 2022 yet. So that would be something I, I take it that we would work with them when we see what, what happens in 2022. My second comment is with respect to the allocation of business spots that suggested. And I, I'm having trouble with saying, with agreeing with the concept, I guess, if I can put it that way, that there should be business spots attributed specifically to individual municipalities. And I say this because I know that CEBED, which, you know, shares the business center with our own staff, their own purpose is a regional center, not solely directed to any one municipality. And the concept behind the accelerator, as I understand it, is that the businesses or the business spots that would be chosen are, as Martin has discussed tonight, are they local or willing to reside in the Georgian Bay? Do they have three to 10 staff and so on? Not where specifically they're located. And for me, and I don't feel that, notwithstanding, we would be putting, you know, a lead supporter's amount of money into this. I, I'm not as concerned that we have a guaranteed number of spots because I believe that, first of all, Collingwood is the business center in any event in this area. I have given it thought. I can't think of one other business park in Wasaga, Clearview, or the Town of Blue Mountains. And that, in fact, we, we have the business park. And if, you know, anyway, I think things speak for themselves. Also, even though a business, for example, you know, if it chooses to locate in Clearview, their employees might live in Collingwood, and that might provide good-paying jobs for people here that, you know, they wouldn't have otherwise. Also, I understand, and this is information I've gleaned through talking more in the last day or so with people who know more than me, that the mentors who would be brought into an accelerator and the private sector fundraisers who are, I understand, are being looked at to also give $200,000 into this, they don't see the municipal boundaries as clearly as we do, and in fact, they don't see them at all. And so I think, you know, it will be hard to, for, you know, the board to sit there and pick, pick companies that will only benefit one municipality over another. I, I guess I'm just one of these who believe that we're a bit of a boat that, you know, will, will all float up together, if I can put it that way, if, if there's any good to be had. So I will not be, I guess I'll be bringing a motion to eliminate that there be business spots guaranteed for any particular municipality. My second, my last concern is with the Board of Directors and that Collingwood be able to appoint a board of, you know, a member, like council would appoint a member to sit on the board, if I can spit that out. I believe that the setup contemplated for this nonprofit would be to have a very much a working board to help the accelerator get off the ground. They're going to help using their connections. They're going to do fundraising. They're going to establish the mentoring and the programming, hiring staff, set up the structure. And I don't feel that this is the kind of nonprofit that should have political influence. I believe that it should be something that, you know, that the staff report, of course, suggests reports back to us at least, you know, maybe twice a year. And certainly, our contribution is going to be limited to two years as it gets off the ground. But in what little time I've had to investigate, I, I think But in what little time I've had to investigate, I think, or I'm told at least that it's highly unusual to have a municipal representative to sit on the board of an incubator and or an accelerator. So I'd like to finish this part by asking through you, Mr. Mayor to staff if they're aware of whether my information is correct, that it's unusual to have a municipal representative sit on the board of an accelerator. Thank you.
I'll look to staff who would like to take that question. C O Skinner?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Counselor Hamlin. Yes, thank you for those comments. We have heard them before. And I think it is highly unusual, if not highly unusual, at least unusual to have a municipal rep and certainly is not what was recommended in the business plan provided. However, I do believe that Collingwood is unique. And in recommending the recommendation that's put forward today, the premise is that Collingwood is a leader in South Georgian Bay and that in the number of issues that we may collaborate on with other municipalities, that this would be one that would be a highlight for Collingwood. And I think that having a municipal rep doesn't mean that it naturally would be necessarily someone from council. What we're looking for is councils appointee of someone that council feels has the skills and knowledge that are required on the board. And I think that that level of link to a board of directors is appropriate. If unusual, it remains appropriate. And if you look otherwise, and there are viable options otherwise, but if you look otherwise, we're looking at entirely a third party independent new board that would run the accelerator that is a flagship of our community with only the annual or semi annual report backs. So I did feel that, though unusual, it made sense in this case for Collingwood to designate a representative that's appropriately skilled.
Any follow up, Counselor Hamlin?
Yes, so thank you for that answer. I'm just wondering, I really have two follow ups to that. One, as other municipalities may decide to join in the funding of this. Do you see other municipalities having a spot on the board as well?
C O?
Thank you. I had contemplated that possibility, but really don't know what the situation may be, if it's a municipalities may want to come in as full partners. They may want to occasionally have someone from their municipality participate, should the spots be geographically assigned. And I think that the recommended conversation between municipalities, that's part of the the motion that should occur in early to mid 2021 would be a good starting starting point for that collaboration and to figure out how that may work. I don't know the answer to that question, Counselor Hamlin. Thank you.
My my second question was, as I recall, the presentation on the accelerator, and I stand to be corrected. But the intent of it is after a few years, it would be self sufficient and not looking for municipal support. Would you see a Collingwood or other municipal representatives coming off the board at that time? Would it be a time limited involvement?
C O Skinner?
Thank you through you. I don't actually see it as a time limited involvement, although I would hope that financially it does become self sufficient. And the reason that I don't see it that way, and I think this would certainly be up for some consideration through the years of development. The reason that I don't see it that way is that this is so integrally tied to our vision for Collingwood. This is about, you know, what we want to be as we grow up and and we fill in our development. And I think that there will always be a municipal interest in in what's happening with the accelerator and intent to to tie it with the kinds of things that are happening in our Business Development Center. So I wouldn't have a final position on that. I certainly that should this go forward, all of us will learn a lot in the next six months and certainly in the next 18 months. But that is my opinion today that we have a long term enduring interest in entrepreneurialism and business development in Collingwood. And that you do, it would be, you know, your your selection of that representative and the tie to the accelerator.
Thank you, C O. Any follow up, Counselor Hamlin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My last question, and it's again about the board, and I hate to go on with this, but I am so concerned that this very much working board that's going to decide who gets the business spots and will raise money and, you know, direct mentors would become political. And not to say anything negative about any of our council members, including myself. I wouldn't see any of us having the necessary skills, if I can put it that way, to sit on this board and do what is necessary. And I'm sure, you know, it's the same with other municipalities in our area. We shouldn't have political entities sitting on here. Now, whether the person appointed should be reporting back to council and have that duty. You know, I just don't see the advantage, but, you know, again, maybe my question, and I hope this will be my last one because I'm sure you're getting tired of listening to me. Count to our C O is, how can we get boards of director? How if we were to have an appointment, can we you know, ensure it wouldn't be a council member, but rather someone from a business community who the this nonprofit entity would be welcoming in any event?
I think the recommendation says the board of directors include an appropriately skilled voting appointee by Collingwood's council. So I don't think it's at all indicating it would be a council member as opposed to someone that we deem appropriately skilled from the community. And I will look to C O Skinner to fill that in.
Thank you, your worship. Clerk almost potentially could be use have some useful advice here about whether it could be an answer to Counselor Hamlin's question restricted to a member of the public as opposed to a council member if they were appropriately skilled.
Sarah?
Certainly, your worship. We have it on other boards. Whether it be a local board or your previous, don't want to bring it up affiliation with another corporation. But we do have the the opportunity to either look within or go external. So based on the the report and how it's been presented, I think that council will retain that that option.
Thanks.
Yes, that's very helpful. So I would like to make a motion to amend this at the appropriate time.
Okay. Counselor Dory?
Thank you. I will speak in support of this staff recommendation. I believe that the need for this municipality to seek ways in better diversifying its job force base and its tax base is urgent. We've, there's some figures quoted within the report of somewhere in the area of 80% of our tax base is residential right now. That's a very scary proportion, in particular, going into, you know, what may potentially be uncertain economic times coming out of this pandemic. I see this as being an ideal use of the proceeds of the sale of our two major assets. Just remind council that this works out to at 200,000, just 1% of the total sale proceeds. And this is 1% that is invested again at a time when economic stimulation should be primary on our priorities as we go into the recovery period again from the pandemic. Also, I know from the report that each percentage point of change in our commercial industrial tax base is worth $350,000. So that is substantially more than the 150,000 that we are looking to invest in this year. In terms of the timing, I believe that there is wisdom in moving forward now and taking this initiative now. Again, out of the report, it is referenced that there are a number of other municipalities who are also implementing or have implemented some sort of an accelerator model. It seems to me that there will come a time when we would fail to achieve the kind of critical mass that we would need to attract investment and or to attract the kinds of businesses that we would like to be included in our accelerator. I also noted, as Counselor Jeffrey mentioned, that we were looking at, in effect, providing any other participating municipality at a discount per business participant as opposed to what what the cost of the town would be. However, in my view, because we were asking for double what their current contribution to our Economic Development Department is, I thought that that was fair in the early days. The only concern that I did have has been addressed. And that was a recommendation that we would be investing in brick and mortar in year two. Because at this point, there are any number of uncertainties, not the least of which would be how effective this program would be. And if we can postpone our our financial contribution to a facility one other year until we have a very good idea of who is participating, how much money is coming from other sources and how effective this program is. Then I I feel that that gives me much greater level of confidence in moving forward with this recommendation. So those are, those are my points to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dory. Are there any council members that have not spoken yet who would like to speak on this item? Counselor Madigan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Saunders. And thank you, everybody else for the comments. They're greatly appreciated and understood. I'm not too worried about sits on who sits on the board or or brick and mortar. Because I believe when we get this pandemic straightened out, we're going to see growth anyways. And Collingwood's always been the place to be. And people are coming here because of the lifestyle. But my main objection, and I'm looking forward to hear what Counselor Jeffrey or Counselor McLeod is going to put forward, is the allocation of the asset funds. I believe if we look at it as in it's only 1%. Yeah, I think that's the wrong way to do it. It's not our money to spend at this moment. We've, this council has been huge in being open and transparent. A phrase that's overused and under not understood as well as it should be, unfortunately. I think the public should hear what we want to do with it before we make a decision. And the eight o'clock Saturday night was a lot to take in. I did my best to get through it. But as it sits right now, I will not be supporting this as it sits right at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Madigan. Anyone else who has not spoken yet? Counselor Burnham, go ahead.
Why not, eh? I I don't, I'm not going to speak to the report. I'm going to reiterate a few things that were said because this is obviously what happens when a 78 page report comes out at eight o'clock on a Saturday night. One thing that I don't think has been mentioned yet, and maybe the whoever public or or media are following this is that I believe it's procedural bylaw that we cannot submit written questions to staff and expect to get answers after noon on Friday, which means that a lot of what people are seeing tonight is because we haven't had a chance to ask these questions yet. I too have the big problem with the asset sale money. I want to go to something that the deputy mayor said. I don't think it's a secret to anybody that he and I are, at least at this point, been pretty good friends for quite some time. I think that I'm open to the fact that the the idea that this accelerator might be a brilliant idea. But he referred to things that his previous term on council that they did. But there were a couple of things we can't forget that we just finished a process about a big decision they made without doing proper due diligence. We have not been able to do on this report. The second thing they did is that they spent asset sales funds before getting public input on it, which we're proposing here. So I'm a little bit like Counselor Madigan in that my biggest deal breaker here. And I disagree with Counselor Dory. This isn't our money to spend. Not yet, not till we've heard from the public. Once they've told us, then it's in our hands. It's it's right now, we're entrusted with it. I don't think we get to choose what to spend it on. So I too will be looking forward to any amendments. That's my biggest deal breaker.
All right. I guess I should speak really because I do want to speak to this item and then I'll allow others that have already spoken to go again. I I do speak in support of this initiative. It is a big initiative. And but it's not new. We talked about this in 2019. We referred it to a consultant. The consultant has come back. The timing of the report back to us was unfortunate. But there's a $200,000 item there in front of us, and we either take that opportunity or we don't. I don't, I think what I'm hearing around the table is general support for the idea of the accelerator. It's the timing and whether or not we're prepared to move to take advantage of the $200,000. And I am prepared to move forward on that basis. But I do share Counselor Jeffrey's concern, and I will look forward to an amendment. And what I would anticipate the amendment would be is that, as in past monies that we have taken out of the sale proceeds during this COVID crisis with the contingency fund and with the interest that we took out to help balance the budget or put the budget through for 2020, was the understanding that we would revisit that decision and where finances allowed, we would refill or repay that amount. And we've done that in both those cases. And I'm optimistic that we will be in that capacity again moving forward, or that we can take it out of another reserve to replenish what's in the asset proceeds. We have heard from the public on the asset proceeds, and I think we've heard overwhelmingly that they want to see us invest those monies in legacy funds that are investments in our community that will have an impact on us. And we've heard it through our community based strategic plan, economic development and jobs and attainable housing and all of those things that go into the mix of a healthy circular economy are a priority for our community. And we've seen in our Economic Development Action Plan that the accelerator and supporting local businesses as well as attracting new businesses is part of that plan. So I think that this is not something that is unanticipated or that the public is not aware of. I think the timing has become a bit of a crunch because of the opportunity for the $200,000. And I think with the changes that have been made through this staff report for a two year window to defer any brick and mortar for until the third year or three for an opportunity for us to have a look at how the impacts of this initiative are on the ground. I think it's an opportunity lost, in my opinion, if we don't take this decision tonight. And but would be on the condition that this council would be able to revisit the investment in the accelerator from the asset proceeds and repay those during the budgeting process or any earlier opportunity in 2021. So those are my comments. I will open it for some limited comments. And then we'll discuss the motion and potential amendments. And Deputy Mary, you had your card up.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I always look forward to debating the merits of who is the starting goalie or
I always look forward to debating the merits of who is the starting goalie or who is playing who with Counselor Berman. I certainly continue to look forward to those debates. But I do take some exception to the comments with regards to the council of 10 to 14 in the context that I think that it's a reasonable assumption that there is no greater critic of that council than myself. And yet, you have to have an opportunity from time to time to step back and acknowledge some of the things that did happen under that council that were positive steps forward. I think that Counselor Berman and I would agree there are maybe some questions to still be answered as it relates to how, and to this day, I can never get the acronym, but the SEABED, how the SEABED came to be formed. However, what I would suggest is that the success that that incubator has had between four organizations working under one roof, I would challenge anybody who would suggest it hasn't been a success. So is it fair to ask how it came to be? I agree with that. Does the merit prove out that it's been a success? I think the numbers speak for themselves. The other comment that I would just make is that this has been something that has been discussed and has been coming down the pipe. So I was the first to acknowledge and state that the report came out over the weekend, and I was the only one, to my knowledge, that reached out to the CAO copying counsel, just to get clarity as to what we could do from an option standpoint tonight. Perhaps others reached out independently. I think that question's been put to bed. However, I go back to my comment about the presentation on the 21st, and parts of the presentation from a macro perspective that I thought were quite good and gave each of us an opportunity to do our own due diligence was the highlighting of other accelerators that have been established that are successful. And I would have hoped that others would have had an opportunity, maybe to do some independent research, to familiarize themselves and to draw their own conclusions as to the success of those independent accelerators. Now, I recognize and acknowledge that in doing so, and there's been very good questions asked tonight. I'm not suggesting that the questions that have been posed tonight would simply be answered or all concerns would be put to bed by simply looking at the successes of those accelerators. I'm just simply stating that I would hope that in looking at what's been accomplished elsewhere, you would draw the conclusion and a comfort level that this is something worthy of investing. And I think Counselor Doherty's summation this evening in terms of the numbers as it relates to the investment upfront, the potential in terms of some of the returns are bang on. And I will leave you with this thought, and it relates to the asset sale. We are, in my opinion, very close to handcuffing ourselves out of fear of making a decision. I agree that the money is the result of two municipally-owned assets. But I'm a firm believer that when you're elected, you're elected to make difficult decisions. Those decisions should be based on broad consultation from time to time. I'm not a person who is in favor of plebiscites or, and the other term escapes me, referendums. But consultation is the cornerstone of making good decisions. And I think that we are getting good information as to where people want to see money spent. And I think that we will have an opportunity to have conversations about the bulk or the majority of those dollars. But in the meantime, here is an opportunity to step up and to make a very, very small financial investment that I think has tremendous long-term financial implications. And those financial implications will then trickle out into so many other opportunities that we'll see further investment within the community, in the community. And so with that said, I really hope that we can put our our money behind our mouth in terms of investing in the entrepreneurial spirit within the community, support this endeavor tonight so that they can get on with making it a reality. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak a second time to the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor McLeod, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I would like to move a motion to defer this discussion to the 2022 budget talks.
And do you have a second? Okay, seconded by Counselor Madigan. Deferrals, we don't have conversations, my understanding. Is that right, clerk? So I will call the vote then, all in favor of the deferral? Opposed? And that is defeated. All right. Is there anyone else that wanted to comment a second time, and then I will go to Counselor Jeffrey for, well, I guess what we need to do is discuss how we're going to address the motion and several items or aspects. So before I move on to that discussion, is there anyone that wanted to speak again on this? We've had a good discussion, lots of good questions and information. All right, seeing no comments there, then I'll look to Counselor Jeffrey. And Counselor Jeffrey, your amendment was to deal with, I don't know if you have the motion in front of you, what it was to deal with the paragraph about the money coming out of the sale proceeds.
The third and that council set aside $400,000. So it was going to be more complicated, but I think we've made it easier simply to say, to add on to the end, which any such expended funds will be repaid from the 20, any 2021 surplus and/or budgeted in 2022.
Okay, I have some proposed wording. I can read it into you for you if you'd like. You would add on to be spent only upon council's approval with the expectation that it will be repaid from any 2021 surplus or from the 2022 budget, if not supported through the formal consideration and approved uses for the asset sale proceeds. Does that work?
It works.
All right. So then, what we'll do then is deal with this amendment to this paragraph, and then I'll look to, I know Counselor Hamlin had an amendment. So it's moved by Counselor Jeffrey, and is there a second for that amendment? Counselor Doherty, and then I'll open it up for discussion on the amendment, and I see Counselor Berman had his card up.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I guess through you to probably the CAO, I just want to kind of get the timing of what we're expecting. So when, again, roughly, are we expecting to get a staff report and make decisions on the public funds so that how that would align timing-wise with repaying the money from the surplus or the 2022 budget?
CAO Skinner?
Thank you, through you to Counselor Berman. So it's our intention to bring forward the staff report on the asset sale proceeds within Q1. Given the workload with additional inquiry, I expect that that will make the March meeting. So it would go to Strategic Initiatives Committee in the first week of March. So that would be the asset sale proceeds decision. The availability of in-year funds, while we may have some early indicators by March, I do expect it'll be somewhat later in the year before we have a full understanding of that.
Any follow-up, Counselor Berman?
Yeah, not an issue, just to sort of answer one of the deputy mayor's concerns. I mean, I definitely don't feel handcuffed making decisions due to the money. I just want to make sure that the full amount of the asset sales dollars is currently what it is and it's put aside. If we go ahead with this tonight and repay those funds from another source after the report from the public fund comes out, does the public still get, do we still discuss that full amount the night that the report comes out? Or will it be that report minus? I'm looking at Counselor Jeffrey, so I'm assuming that was the intent of her amendment. So let's say there's 18.7 million net from the sale, just to pick a number. If we borrow $400,000 from it tonight, we haven't repaid it by the time we make a decision on the staff report. We'll still be deciding on $18.7 million that night.
I see Counselor Jeffrey wants to speak, and then I'll look to the CAO just to get confirmation from staff's perspective. Go ahead, Counselor Jeffrey.
Thank you. My intent was is that we would have the discussion on the full 18.7 or whatever the number is, but with the realization that it may also include an approval for that economic development money anyway, but it would take that second approval.
CAO, do you want to add to that?
Thank you, your worship. And the one caveat that I would have is that the initial 150 and the potential backstop of the additional 50, we would have committed to an accelerator unless and until we can get that repaid through, for example, a red grant and/or an in-year opportunity that arises. So that consideration of the 18.7 would be minus that, say, 150 with some kind of an understanding that were we able to repay it, it would go into X decision of council, whatever pot council would decide to put that in.
Good, thank you. Any follow-up, Counselor Berman? Okay. Are there any other comments on the amendment? Counselor McLeod?
Just a request for a clarification, because it's a long one. So which and that are we looking at? Is it like the fifth one or the third one?
The third one. It's the third one, Counselor McLeod, that reads, and that council set aside $400,000 of the asset sale proceeds for economic development, the Business Development Center and/or the accelerator to be spent only upon council's approval. And then the addition is with the expectation that it would be repaid from any 2021 surplus or from the 2022 budget, if not supported through the formal consideration and approved uses for the asset sale proceeds. You're looking consternated.
A little, actually, because that sort of goes to my request for a deferral to the budget talks. Like, this makes that happen today, but puts it in the budget of 2022, does it not?
That's one mechanism, yes, or 2021 funds. What it does is allow us, well, in my opinion, it allows us to deal with this request today and make a decision, and then look down the road in the future to either recoup that cost through the 2021 budget if we find savings or grant monies, or through the 2022 budgeting process, or it would be an option for this council on the sale, asset sale proceeds determination to decide that we wanted to make this decision and allot these funds. So it keeps, I think, many doors open. And I don't know, CAO Skinner, if you would like to add to that. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. And I think this question actually illustrated something to me where I may have spoken without complete clarity earlier. Counselor Berman asked twice, I think, because he was looking for some clarity that Counselor McLeod may have just provided to me, which is we would be addressing the entirety of the 18.7 or whatever the total is. And in rereading this proposed amendment, you would be, when you address the asset sale proceeds, be addressing it in the entirety, because under this proposed amendment, if it wasn't supported through your formal consideration and approved uses for the asset sale proceeds, you would be asking staff to, in fact, repay that from the 2022 budget opportunity. Sorry, thank you for allowing me to clarify my answer on that earlier question.
No, that was helpful. Does that assist, Counselor McLeod?
Sort of, thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions on the amendment before I call the vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? And that amendment is carried. Counselor Hamlin, you had an amendment that you wanted to put on the table?
Yes, no, thank you. There are two. In the last paragraph of the motion, there are the contingencies that have to be satisfied to the satisfaction of the CAO. So my first one would be to delete the second one that says Collingwood have four business spots guaranteed in the year one cohort and an agreement in principle that municipalities will receive business spots in accordance with their contributions.
Okay, so we'll deal with that one first. And do you have a second? Or is there a second for that amendment? Okay, it doesn't look like we have a secondary, Counselor Hamlin.
Okay, I'll proceed to my second one. So the second last one under these contingencies reads, "The Board of Directors Include An Appropriately Skilled Voting Appointee By Collingwood's Council." I wanted to suggest that that be changed to say, "The Board of Directors Include An Appropriately Skilled External Voting Appointee By Collingwood's Council For Year One."
Okay, I'll look for a second on that. Is there a second for the second proposed amendment? Are you seconding, Counselor Doherty, or do you want to speak?
Well, thank you. I would just like to ask Counselor Hamlin what her intent is. What I'm taking away is that external would be someone from outside of the community. Is that what you're suggesting?
I think Counselor Hamlin's suggesting not be a council member, and be a member of the public. Is that correct, Counselor Hamlin?
Yes, appropriately skilled would probably mean that it's a business person in the community, but not a political council. Yeah.
Counselor Doherty?
I don't see the need for the amendment. We're saying that the Board of Directors would be comprised of an appropriately skilled voting appointee by Collingwood Council, not from Collingwood Council. Therefore, that suggests to me that Collingwood Council would identify the best possible appropriately skilled voting member from wherever that individual might come.
Yeah, I'll look to the clerk on this, but I think the wording contemplates that it could be a council member or it could be someone from the public. And I think what Counselor Hamlin is saying is she wants it to exclude a council member. That's my understanding. Counselor Hamlin, can you confirm?
Yes, that's exactly right.
All right. So do we have a second for this second motion amendment? Seeing none, Counselor Hamlin, I guess we won't be able to form that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then I think where we are now, counsel, unless there are other amendments or requests to sever, we're going to consider the motion in its entirety, subject to the amendment of Counselor Jeffrey to the third paragraph. So, okay, and Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to request a recorded vote.
Okay. So I am ready for the vote. I think we've had a good discussion. I'll pass it to the clerk.
Certainly. Thank you, your worship. A recorded vote has been requested on the motion as amended. All those in favor, please raise your yes signs. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your no signs. Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you, clerk. And thank you, counsel, for that. It was a good discussion and a large initiative. All right, I'm going to find my agenda. So this takes us to notices of motion. Are there notices of motion, counsel? Go ahead, Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I have two that are both about a sentence long because the clerks agreed with me to help you with the wording so they appear on Wednesday's agenda. The first one is about, we've been recording, audio recording in-camera meetings since almost the start of the term, and that was to be reviewed at the end of And that was to be reviewed at the end of the judicial inquiry, which is now over. So I'd like to table the motion that we continue with the practice. You don't need any more than that, do you?
But is that enough? Yes, I'm seeing a nod and affirmative.
And the second one, which is more relevant after the debate we just had, and that was when I wrote it down, was I'd like to move that we that none of council nor staff. Address the asset funds again until we for the staff report made a decision on the asset funds. Just I'd like to take the asset funds out of any discussions and any considerations between now and one of the C A O said the report's coming out.
Beginning of March. So, yeah, okay, I think we've got that into the records then. Sarah? All right, are there any other notices of motion? I have two actually, so I'm going to pass the chair to the deputy mayor. You're muted Keith. You're muted.
Thank you. Communication one oh one. Maris Anderson, I'll turn it right back to you to read in your two motions or notices.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor. The first one does follow segues a bit from our discussion about collaborative regional approach. And the motion reads, whereas Collingwood council is dealing with a number of issues that would benefit from regional consultation and collaboration. Whereas Collingwood has a history of working with our neighboring municipalities in Simcoe County and Gray County. The resolve that council support the establishment of the municipal forum that meets regularly consisting of the mayors and C A Os of Collingwood and our neighboring municipalities. To discuss and work collaboratively to address local and regional issues. And further direct mayor and C A O to reach out to our neighboring municipalities to seek interest and if supported to jointly develop terms of reference. With the shared mandate and equal opportunities for the participating municipalities. That is the first motion. The second motion deals with the judicial inquiry and moving forward with the recommendations with the province. Whereas the Collingwood judicial inquiry was asked to examine two major transactions that the town of Collingwood engaged in under the leadership of the twenty ten twenty fourteen municipal council. Whereas the commissioner, associate chief justice Frank Morocco released his report on November second twenty twenty containing his findings and recommendations. And whereas a number of the three hundred and six recommendations call for the province of Ontario to make changes to the municipal legislative framework. The resolve that council support the mayor and deputy mayor in bringing a motion at Simcoe County council, seeking its support in lobbying the province of Ontario to make changes. And or commence consultation with the municipalities of Ontario and other stakeholder groups such as the association of municipalities of Ontario. About changes to the municipal legislative framework pursuant to the recommendations of associate chief justice Morocco in a forum satisfactory to council. And so those are my emotions. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Oh, thank you. And I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, if there are no other notices of motion, then we will go to item ten, which is the county report.
Thank you, Maris Anderson. There were just two items that I wanted to draw to council's attention as well as to the public. The first, this is in a continuing series on the subject matter of affordable housing. And again, the matter of attainable housing was raised in our earlier discussion this evening. And it continues to be an incredibly. Incredibly important discussion as we can move forward with twenty twenty one. This particular seminar is being, virtual seminars being hosted by the county in cooperation with C M H C. It's on Thursday, January the twenty eighth twenty twenty one from ten a m to eleven thirty a m. It is a forum on creating energy efficiency through passive housing. So again, this is a series. For those who are interested in registering, there is a email address. And I'll read it out. It's a H H P S at Simcoe dot C A. Again, a H H P S at Simcoe dot C A. And that is something that is open to members of council as well as the public who are interested in the subject matter of affordable or attainable housing. And the second matter is with regards to our long term care facilities within the county. And a note that was sent out by staff last evening, in fact, our director Jane Sinclair. Who has been front and center in terms of fighting the pandemic within our long term care facilities. As well as working with our paramedics across the county and in our two separated cities. For those who don't know, the director Jane Sinclair, she is recognized within the industry as a leading professional. And in fact, has been called upon a number of occasions to give pertinent information, context and. Clarity as to what's happening with regards to COVID and our long term care facilities. We have some good news as it relates to the vaccination rollout. Of course, we're hearing numbers as it relates to the province, but we all know that the hardest hit in terms of. Those infected with the disease have been the demographic in our senior population and in particular our long term care facilities. And of the four facilities that are under the direction, leadership of the county, including Georgian Manor, Simcoe Manor. Trillia Manor and Sunset Manor, Sunset being here in Collingwood. They have now hit a target of ninety one percent of those who have now received the vaccine. So that's an excellent number. Positive news, we of course are well aware of the outbreak that took place. In Beaton and the fact that we were able to collaboratively work with R V H. And it was it was heart wrenching to hear the stories of those who who unfortunately passed, family members who had to. You know, deal with a situation from the outside, not having an opportunity to be with their loved ones. So this is incredibly good news that we are at ninety one percent in terms of vaccination for those four centers as a whole. So that's that's great to hear. And those are the two comments that I just wanted to pass along this evening.
Thank you, deputy mayor. That's is very good news. And just to note that the Simcoe Muskoka district health unit has been one of the leaders in getting the vaccination out. I think they vaccinated nine thousand residents of the Simcoe Muskoka area, so they they are doing an excellent job. So Dr Gardner and his team are to be commended. And that's positive steps. Leading them to older deferred business and eleven point one. Is there any older deferred business council? Seeing none, other business, any other business? Okay, I'll start with councillor Jeffrey and then I've got the deputy mayor councillor Doherty and councillor Berman.
Thank you, Mayor Saunders. And I was just would like to ask director Culver to maybe give us an update with respect to the arts and culture feasibility study. Process. I know we talked about it in our budget and I was just wondering if we could have an update.
Yes, no, there's director Culver now. Go ahead Dean.
Thank you, your worship and through you. So a proponent vendor consultant has been secured. And we've had an initial kickoff meeting to date. Such things as public consultation and timelines were discussed. And right now the consultant is in the progress process of putting together again chart package that we can review and agree upon. Before moving into the implementation of of their processes.
Any follow up councillor Jeffrey?
That's great. Thank you. I just had some people through the arts and culture community asking about it, so I thought we'd answer to everybody who wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. We'll look forward to hearing that as it evolves. Councillor Doherty.
Thank you. I received some comments and a suggestion. From the architectural conservancy of Ontario, Collingwood branch as to. Future composition of the heritage committee. And I did forward those comments to the clerk and the C A O. But further to that, there was a question as to at what stage the. Staff report as to ultimate composition of that committee and some other committees in the municipality sits right now.
I think that's clerk Thomas, Sarah?
Certainly, through your worship to councillor Doherty, yes, we did receive your response. And that is part of the report that's coming forward. So we're anticipating either February or March. At the S I C since it's comprehensive of numerous areas.
Thank you.
Deputy mayor.
Thank you. Question and a comment on two separate items. Question is. With a preface, and that is that some time ago. I was appointed on an interim basis to represent council at the B I A. And I'd like to see that through to the end of this term. We've got a number of incredible initiatives that we're working on, but more importantly. The rollout of the new waste collection system is coming this year with a fall rollout. So procedurally, I guess the question is just how does that go from an interim to the permanent? And I'll leave it at that. And then I have a second comment.
Yeah, click on this.
Certainly through your worship to deputy mayor Hall, I'll have to take a look at the wording of that original motion. And that could be something that's captured in that report to finalize your position on on the B I A board moving forward.
Thank you.
Deputy mayor follow up or your, sorry, go ahead.
If it if it makes it any easier for the clerk, I am continued or I'm quite comfortable to continue with a zero dollar pay increase. Works well for me.
Put it towards the accelerator.
There we go. The the second I just I wanted to make a comment. Based on the the earlier conversation tonight that we had with regards to snowmobiling or sledding. And it it's I'm not advocating one way or the other. And I am pleased to hear that the police service is being very proactive. It's maybe a comment or an observation that we could pass through to our active transportation and trails committee just for ongoing public awareness. As we move forward, and that is that we've been, you know, blessed with an incredible trail system, both within Collingwood. As well as the Georgian Trail, as well as all of the other neighboring trails. Whether it be Blue, Clearview, Wasanga Beach. And we have rules of engagement within the four municipalities as it pertains to different uses. So one I think would be, I think it would be prudent that in the future. There be some conversation between the four municipalities as to how we can sort of tighten up. Our rules of engagement for the various uses so that when somebody within the community, because councillor Hamlin, when we were talking about the accelerators, she's spot on. People don't see the boundary, the the political boundaries. They they see the geographical area as a whole. And so one, I just would like to see some thought given as to the the rules of engagement. My observation to the uses is that there has only been two changes. The types of uses haven't changed. And the two uses that have changed is one, more people are using the trails, which is fantastic. And the other I would suggest, and again, it's just an opinion, is that people are using these buds, earbuds. And so whether it's sledding or a cyclist or whatever the case may be, a person with a dog. I've observed on a number of occasions where people, for example. Like a cyclist is coming along and they are following the rules of the of the road, or in this case, the trail, they're ringing their bell, et cetera. And they're properly on the left and the person that they're coming up upon has buds in and can't hear them. And I think that, you know, we could be doing a bit of a more of a proactive piece in terms of. You know, messaging to the community that when you're on the trails, you know, it it may be not in your best interest to be wearing. Earpieces where you can't hear those around you. And the second is, and this is thinking more in the winter where we've got less sunlight and we do have sleds on the trails. The people, and I'm guilty of this, so I'm speaking from experience. I have an all black jacket. I have all black snow pants. And I need to be wearing something that has reflective material in it. So that I can see those who are approaching me, but vice versa, they can see me at the same time. And so I would just convey those comments through maybe to staff to our active transportation committee for consideration. That when they are continuing to do their really, really good work on public education, that those two points are taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor McLeod, did you want to speak to that?
I actually wanted to speak to both things that the deputy mayor just just raised and and one of which is actually just to make a little joke, which is I'm. A keenly aware when I cross into Clearview because that's when my dog gets off the leash. Sorry. The I want to apologize actually to the deputy mayor because several months ago I raised with him. Having remembered that it was six months that the appointment was for him to the B I A, whether he would be interested in continuing on. Received his reply in the affirmative and put it in my mind that I was going to make sure I made a notice of motion and completely and utterly forgot. And so I'm happy to make the notice of motion now to appoint the deputy mayor to the B I A for the remainder of this term. Or whatever is required to make that happen with my apologies.
Thank you for that councillor McLeod. I guess we'll have that read in and we can deal with that notice of motion at next Monday. So that's what we'll do. Thank you for that. Councillor Berman.
Thank you, Mayor Saunders. So as promised, I'm going to follow up on the two sort of what I call rhetorical questions I asked under the consent agenda. I mean, I knew those two things were false and I'm assuming all of council and staff and the media knew that they're false, but I think it's unreasonable to expect the public to think that they were false. I think that we are, or I hope we are all acutely aware of what misinformation is causing all over the place and even locally. I mean, when this meeting started, there was a story that came out entitled misinformation causes confusion around COVID cases at Roberta Place. Which I remember hearing about, but here's the story on it, all the way up to what we've been watching the states. I think that we have as a council tried to do things to be ahead of the curve on. Climate crisis, on systemic racism. I think we need to make some sort of an effort to do the same thing here. I mean, we're watching Twitter putting, you know, phrases at the end of tweets saying this is not a factual statement. I appreciate what C A O said. I have no problem with opinions. The more consent letters, the better. I love it as a former blogger when people put their names to things. I think we need to do something about, as the example I used, the things where one and one can't equal anything other than two. And I think those are really what comes to mind specifically, false information about numbers. And the other one that we addressed with clerk tonight was false information about our procedures. I mean. The thing is, is that when somebody puts a letter on the consent agenda, there's a permanent record of it on the website and it can be used well down the road. I didn't realize the irony that Mr Ireland's letter tonight was sent to somebody who also had a consent agenda letter. A few weeks back, using another consent agenda letter that was three years old. So there's a permanent record of these things on the database and I don't think it's fair to expect people to know that there was a debate about something that was incorrect. So I discussed this with the clerk. I don't know what the solution is. I don't want any more work for staff. I don't want to stop anybody from writing anything. I think that we need. To keep politics out of that. I think it could be something as simple and then I look to anybody else's opinion that if you see something that's. I don't expect staff to do this. If we as councillors see something that's factually incorrect. On a consent agenda, I don't pull it, point it out. If it is, in fact, as I say, a number that was just made up that 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 spins a narrative, then when the minutes come out, staff can just note that. That's not the solution. That's just the first thing that popped in my head, but I think it's important. And I'm going to use a quote that's not mine, but that. I think hits us home is that people no longer choose the news that they want. They choose the facts that they want. And I think we have to take responsibility for what we're putting out there as fact.
And I think we have to take responsibility for what we're putting out there as fact. So I'm not proposing anything. I'm just throwing that out to my colleagues to see if anybody has anything to say, or how we move forward on it.
Well, I think, Counselor Berman, those are all good points, primarily calling out if you see an inaccurate fact. But I think, I know, in speaking with CAO Skinner and Clerk Thomas, there was proposal of a disclaimer on the consent agenda, just to indicate that these are opinions of the writers, and that we take no responsibility for the accuracy or inaccuracy. And I don't know if, Sarah, you wanted to speak to that? How we would implement that going forward?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, we did have conversations, actually, CEO Skinner and myself had talked about it last month, if not the month before, about a process that we can implement. So staff will investigate, you know, at the very minimum, we can put some sort of disclaimer, as CEO Skinner mentioned earlier today, that, you know, just because council's receiving it doesn't mean that you're approving the, you know, accuracy of the information contained therein. But I think between us within our procedural rules and, and council, and how those fit on the agenda and the accuracy, as well as just general inaccurate information, will be something between the clerks department and the communications department moving forward. So we'll see, we'll look into some best practices and maybe come up with something innovative that will, council can consider moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Counselor McCloud, you had your card up. Did you want to speak to this item?
I did, thank you. I wonder whether, whether a simple note in the minutes about inaccuracies being pointed out might solve this problem, might be very, very easy. If, if a council member notices an inaccuracy, brings it up, that gets put in the minutes. That might be something that one might like to explore.
See the clerk nodding. Go ahead, Sarah.
Through your worship, the reason why I hesitate on throwing that out as a, a quick, easy option is that council minutes are supposed to be without note or comment. So it would almost have to be in the form of a direction. So there is some further investigation that we'll need to do.
Thanks, Sarah. Counselor Berman, you had your card up again?
Well, first of all, I'm happy with the answer from the clerk of it, but it'll have further discussion. I think that's great. And I think Counselor McCloud was where I was, but a couple of steps back. I didn't want to complicate it. So I, I think with her suggestion, that somebody could pull a consent agenda letter, but then we'd have to make a separate reference to the minutes. I would have just liked, you know, when this consent letter appears in the minutes, there's simply a circle around a number saying, not verified by the town, or something like that. And again, only, only on specific black and white things. Not because somebody doesn't like the color of my suit or something like that. Well, I'm happy with the answer from the clerk.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the items I had down. I did want to just ask the CAO Skinner to give an update since we've received the shutdown award, award, shutdown order. If there are anything by way of update in terms of the implications for Town Hall and our staff.
Thank you, your worship. I think that staff have done a good job in summarizing a few of these on the town website. There haven't been too many changes to town services. We had been relatively proactive in making sure we were keeping up with and anticipating what we thought were coming from the province. So a few of those would include reducing the cap of the number of folks on the outdoor rink. But it is still operating. Thank you to the respectful behavior enabling this to continue. And Town Hall, as many people know, has had the customer service in-person opportunities reduced to Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings. But the online, on the phone, and other opportunities continue on their regular hours. However, most of the questions that we're receiving are actually not about town services, but more about what people can do under the stay-at-home order, and about what our local businesses are able to do, and about enforcement. So we've had about a dozen calls to both bylaw and customer service, so a couple of dozen in total. And the town website, and I've asked that, one of the pages from the town website be placed up on your, your screen here, directs people to a couple of places, which includes to the province for, not right with what's on the screen here, but to the province for the requirements which are set out in a couple of regulations, 8220 and 1121. And they include a lot of detail about what businesses are allowed to open, for example, and what an essential trip might include. And as well, the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, of course, has wonderful information on their website with guidelines on many, many things that a person or a business, or in that matter, a government entity might want to do. Most of our questions, or a good number of our questions, are related to enforcement. And recently, the health unit, the OPP, the bylaw officers and myself met and developed this chart. And so I just wanted to tell people about it. I'm gonna go through these lines very briefly. But they do talk about types of complaints or inquiries. So if you need to know about a non-essential business operating, you would contact Town Bylaw. You want to know about operating your own business, talks about seeing the applicable regulations from the province. Social gatherings on private property are an OPP item. Social gatherings on public property would be our bylaw staff during the day and the OPP after hours, non-emergency line. Construction workers are Ministry of Labor. Businesses not following sector-specific health and safety rules would be the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit. Someone not following the stay-at-home orders would be bylaw or after hours, the OPP. And finally, anyone not wearing a mask or a face covering would be, it would be bylaw, and if necessary, they would involve others. And there's some great frequently asked questions below that. But in general, there's a, a quick guide. But if you're worried, you're not sure, you can always call the bylaw line and/or the non-emergency OPP line, and we'll be able to support people within the community with the appropriate information, or if necessary, an enforcement action. Thank you for asking for that, hopefully, brief update.
Thank you, Sonya. Counselor Jeffrey, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick question on that chart through to the CAO. Is that, is that a link that takes you to a phone number and/or an email contact for bylaw? Everybody else's phone numbers are quite prominent and easy to find. Ours just says bylaw. So I'm just wondering if it might be better articulated where you can actually see it.
Thank you for that question through the chair to you. Yes, that is a live link, but that is a good comment. We could also add the, add the phone numbers in the chart. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that, counsel? Good. So that brings us into our confirmatory bylaw. It is moved by Counselor Doherty and seconded by Counselor Hamlin. It resolved that bylaw number 2021-1 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of council held January 18, 2021, being enacted and passed this 18th day of January 2021. I will call the vote. All in favor? That is passing unanimously. Thank you. Counselor Jeffrey, you are so entrenched in this role that it actually is on my motion. So moved by Counselor Jeffrey. The meeting of council be adjourned at 7:49. All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel. That was a busy meeting and a good start to the new year, and you've got lots before us. So thank you.